Meeting called to order. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Chapman.
Here.
Councilmember Clayton.
Here.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Here.
Mayor Moore.
Here.
Please stand for a silent prayer, a moment of reflection. We will now salute the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. As to comply with the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 PL 1975, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided in the following manner. The annual notice is forwarded to the Asbury Park Press, the Coaster, and the Star Ledger on January 3rd, 2023, and posted on the bulletin board the same date. All notices are on file with the city clerk. At this time, we're on to special event applications. Chief Katty?
There are two special events applications. One is, pardon me for a second. One is a wedding on June 8th on the 7th Avenue beach, and the other one is a beach cleanup by the Monmouth County Prosecutor's Office. Any questions? Yeah, next.
Thank you. We're now on to matters from City Council. Councilmember Bez Anderson.
First of all, I'd like to say good evening to everyone. And I understand that there's a very special person in the audience today. Mm-hmm, her name is Rita, and it's your birthday. And so, on behalf of the mayor and council and Chief Katty and Fred, we'd like to wish you a very happy birthday.
Thank you.
You're very welcome. Happy birthday.
Does that mean I have to be nice to them?
No, you know what? You're always nice. So, but you know, you can say whatever you need to say during public participation, but we just wanted to wish you a happy birthday.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Councilmember Chapman.
Hi, everyone, and happy birthday, Rita. So, on May 13th, there's going to be a cleanup on Westlake. We're going to meet at 10 o'clock at the Beer Garden to clean up in and around Westlake, get ready for the summer. And also, the community farm stand also opens on May 13th, right outside here. That's it.
Thank you. Councilmember Clayton.
I have nothing at this time. Thank you.
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Quinn.
I just want to give our heartfelt condolences. Donna's father passed away, which is why Kevin's here. So, we are all sending our condolences to Donna and her family. Thank you.
Mayor Moore.
Yep. Rita, happy birthday.
Oh, thank you, John.
Did you unfriend me on Facebook because I didn't get a notice? Happy birthday, Rita.
Thank you.
Thirty-nine, right?
That's right.
I'm going to give you thirty-nine extra seconds. But I had a couple things. Tomorrow night, in this council chambers from 6:00 to 8:00, there's the meeting for 3rd, 4th. Anybody who wants to come about safe routes. So, very important meeting. Please, it's been all over, next one, everything. Please attend. There's a bunch of neat coming up, events coming up at the Senior Center, so please go to our website and see. I believe there's a Mother's Day luncheon on the 12th, which is Friday. And then, there's another luncheon on the 25th. But Senior Center's underutilized and underused, so hopefully more people will go there and see how great it is. That's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Chief Katty, do you have anything?
No, no, thank you.
Thank you. Matters from City Attorney?
Nothing at this time.
Thanks, Fred. We're now on to public participation. May I have a motion to open meeting to the public? Just a motion to open meeting to the public?
Oh, move it.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Public justiciation portion is now open. Any member of the public who wishes to speak, please use the microphone. State your name and address for the record. There'll be a three-minute time limit for each speaker.
I'm Maurice Gilliard.
Your name and your address?
161 Ridge Avenue.
Thank you.
I just, I have problems with the whole system. It's crazy how everything is going. But I've been studying law for three years, and everything that I have found is like, I don't know. I was born, I know my mom and my dad had me, I'm here. I just want to live life and be peaceful and, you know, follow God's orders, you know? But I have to worry about Caesar's orders. And it's crazy because, all because of what someone thinks, something is away, but the facts could say otherwise. And I'm just trying to know who has real power to help me with anything that's really like, because I'm trying to fight for my life in a way. And all, all that's out there is presumptions and what I am. Somebody can't tell me what I am, but it's out there. I talked to like two, three lawyers today. They told me they couldn't help me. And it's like, well, you're lawyers. They can't help me. And it's, well, where do I get this help from? Because people put everything on me, but somehow I got to get all this stuff off me. So, I'm just trying to figure out, is there anybody I can talk to of like, of any real power, I guess? I don't know, because all I know is, you know, like I said, things have real consequences because of this make-believe world that people is in. People are dying, people are, I find it funny how people are working to own stuff that you can never own in real life. And this is real life. And if you can't own it, why is you working that hard to own something you can never own? But some people don't even know that they can't own it. But I don't know, maybe it's just too much or, I don't know. I just know I read books, and books tell a beautiful story. But why is nobody else reading books? Or whenever somebody tells me something, they can't direct me to a law book or anything. And the law book says the opposite. You know, everybody inventing new laws. I didn't even know you could invent new laws. Like, everything is crazy. And it's like, I don't want to play no game. I just want to be here. I'm a journalist. I have my own marketing company. I just want to write. I don't, I don't charge people and all that because I know the whole fiat paper thing. And it's like, I understand getting ten people to help me build my business is more than ten people paying me fiat paper. But somebody else will understand that, oh, you know, they want the paper. And I got all these problems for the paper, the paper, the paper. This paper isn't real. So, I'm just trying to say, can someone, I don't know. I'm looking for some type of help, guidance. I don't know. Everybody seems to care about Americans and all this stuff. So, if you care, I care about everybody in here. But I hope everybody ain't working their whole entire life to own something they can't own just to have an equitable title. That's all I have to say.
Sir, would you be able to just repeat your first and last name for me?
Maurice Gilliard.
Maurice Gilliard, thank you.
Right. I don't know what help in what field you want, but if it's like workforce development, you can talk to-
Well, I want to correct my standard in everything that I am not.
Okay. No, no, that's okay. But I mean, it, well.
Doug, Social Services?
We have Doug at Social Services, who's in the buildings from 9:00 to, I think, 8:30 to 4:30. And then, we also have Robert Goodman, who would be maybe with workforce development and something like that. So, there are two people you could start off with. And if they're not the right people, one of those two will guide you to who in the city you should be talking to. Thank you, and wish you luck.
Hi, Rita Moreno. Thank you for your wishes. In the end, we're always friends, no matter what. I wanted to talk about the casino. I thought there was an ordinance or a contract that we had have pathway to go through the casino. Isn't that, that, that one and Convention Hall? Wasn't it like 20 feet? So, if it's, I don't know what's broken at the casino. I don't know if it's the floor or whatever, but don't you think they should fix it? Because that's, that's in their contract, and we always have to go by the contract, right? So, that's one of my questions. The other one is, I didn't understand the resolution about administrators. What's that about? And the other one about T and M. Why are we hiring them? I mean, like, I don't know, did it go out to bid? Or is this a special? I'm trying to be nice, but that's about it, though. But the casino, they have to have an opening. It's in the contract. No? Yes? I think so. At least 20 feet.
Okay, what was your middle question about, a miss about, you said about?
It's some, I didn't understand it because you got to follow the chapter five code this, you know, all those things. It's about administration, something about that.
Tell me what resolution and-
Oh, what resolution is that, Denise? I have my assistant here.
It's number 20. It's this one, John.
Is it?
Is it the special duty assignments?
Yeah, that one. Which one?
It's ordinance 20, 23-20?
Yes, I think so.
Okay, so Fred, this is the ordinance-
This is the special duty assignments. So, that ordinance, if that's the ordinance that you're referring to, Rita, anytime police and fire and EMTs are called to do a special duty assignment when they're off duty, you know, they can be contracted by private entities to do security at different events and whatnot or to do detail when there's road projects and whatnot. There's hourly rates that are paid to the officers who are involved as well as an administrative fee to the city. And we just upped the rates a couple of weeks ago. And then, we heard from a couple of representatives from the fire department that there was some language that needed to be refined with regard to security and safety assignments. And that's all we're doing with the ordinance. It's kind of like a cleanup item.
Oh, okay.
Okay, so that answers that one. So, then, T and M is the city engineer, and somebody has to be in charge of watching the contractors build the firehouse. So, that's why they're being hired, because of the city engineer. And so, it's up and above like-
Is that outside of their contract?
Yes.
Oh, so they're going to get paid more?
Yeah, it's in the thing, I forget. It's five, I think it's five, 500 and something change.
Is that the one that's 571?
I think so, yes.
Oh, my God.
As far as-
Well, I should ask you about the bushes, but it's okay.
Haven't forgotten, and Fred and I talked about that today, and he's still looking for an answer.
Well, the issue, unfortunately, is the way the city code is written. Any street trees that are within the right of way fall under the jurisdiction of the shade tree commission. And because of that, I have had an opportunity to speak with representatives of the planning department, and they have reached out to the shade tree commission about this, who in turn have been in touch with the neighboring property owners about those hedges.
Oh, okay.
Because in 2018- As a member of the shade tree commission, Fred, I mean, we've never gone to people and said, "You got to remove your hedges." I mean, if people have dead trees, I mean, I've been on the shade tree 20 years.
I think that's Rita's frustration, where like, she was told first-
It's five years already.
Right. Told zoning, and now she's being told shade tree commission. So, rightfully so, that she's frustrated.
That might be something we look at to change at some point. Because I can tell you the shade tree's not looking to get involved in this drama.
I know that, because they're only volunteers, and they're doing a good job. But they can't go tell a homeowner, "You got to cut down your hedges." They can't. How is that? I mean, I would tell them to go home. I mean, like, yeah, but they just, if they would push them up, if they weren't in the right of way, it'd be fine. I mean, I don't care that they have bushes, but they're in the wrong place. And now, Tides Hotel has that. And, you know, it catches on. All bad news Kate's carried.
And then, as far as your question about the casino. It's owned by Madison Marquette. They've discovered something which they think would be a problem. So, they're doing the right thing by shutting it down and going to look at it and hopefully get it open soon. As far as like, with the Convention Hall, there's a specific mention in the SDA about an easement. It has to remain open no matter what. If they shut down the Convention Hall and the Paramount, they still have to keep that easement. That language is not in the casinos, does not refer to the casino, no. So, but they want to get it back open, we want to get it back open, but right now, they've discovered something they think is not safe. And it's not something low, it's something high up in the air. It's the steel trusses where the sore air is rotting away the rust and the rust rivets. So, to make sure nobody gets hurt with some piece of steel falling down or the roof falling down until they get-
Are they still in default?
Yes.
Well, what does that mean?
It means we're holding them in default, and we're not happy with the job they're doing. And, you know, we're trying to work with it.
Well, I wouldn't work with them any longer. I really take action now.
We're bound by the 2002 agreement and the 2010 SDA, so-
In how many years?
Yeah, a lot. Believe me, I think everybody up here is just as frustrated as you. And you've been to meetings where we've said, hey, we've reached out to them, and they don't even return our phone calls. So, they're hard people to deal with, they-
Well, I think you should take action, and we'll be behind you with that one.
Okay, so I think-
You should say that you asked Ocean Grove to open the gates.
Take it back!
Okay, all right. Disregard.
Yep, okay. Again, happy birthday.
Okay.
Thank you, Rita.
Thank you.
Hi, Alyssa DeLeo, I'm with Tap into Asbury Park. I just had a question about, since the casino is closed, I would like to know if the hours of the bridges connecting Asbury Park to Ocean Grove will be extended for foot traffic?
I don't think so. Working on it, working on it.
Okay.
I said, yes, I wasn't going to mention it, but since this question's asked, today, I sent the mayor of Neptune and their business, their BA, their city manager, a request from Asbury Park to increase the hours. And the mayor was very nice, Mayor Cafferty. He said, John, like, you know, I talked to him this morning. He said, shoot me an email, send an email around 3:00 today, and a letter officially asking him. And CC was their city manager, and he's got to take it to their council, and they're going to look into it and get back to us. So, we did request that it no longer be locked at midnight because with the casino being closed, the foot traffic on both the bridges is going to be increased. And we've also given our police department and transportation directive the heads up, hey, guys, you know, if this isn't open by summertime, you better come up with some alternate plans because Lake Avenue is a street that has a lot of traffic on it, and sometimes they're speeding. So, we better have some contingency plans that bicyclists and people using the foot bridges aren't coming across the foot bridges and getting hit by cars and everything. So, I think we're touching all bases and looking at everything in the future, where we've already reached out to police and James Banana, the transportation director, as far as like, looking for safety for Lake Avenue with the foot bridges. And we've reached out to Neptune, asking for the, you know, bridges, the hours to be past 12:00. So, we're doing our due diligence as far as like, we know we have a problem. We don't know how long it's going to last, but we're trying to make sure like, we're touching every and all base. And I think we've been very responsible by doing that already. But I thank you for asking the question. I was going to announce that since you asked the question, I have to say, I couldn't fib to you. I'd say, yep, we sent a letter today to the mayor of Neptune asking that. And again, he's got, he can't make that decision. He's like myself, he's got to take it back to his governing body, and his governing body has to make that decision.
Okay, right. Is the goal-
And just to clarify that, it's the Neptune Police Department that actually is charged with locking the gates.
Oh, okay.
Right. That is, the bridges are not owned by the Ocean Grove Camp Meeting Association. The bridges are owned by Neptune.
Okay. And is the goal to have them open 24 hours?
Hey, look, I mean, they're shutting them at midnight. If they say, we'll keep them open at 3:00, I'd be happy as heck. I mean, but I mean, I don't know what they're going to do. We've been asking for years that they be open for 24 hours, and the response has been no. Again, you know, they're in a tough situation where they complain about like, all our people parking Ocean Grove, taking all the parking spots. So, they have to answer to their constituents. So, it's at their governing body. He probably hasn't even got it yet because he was out of town when I talked to him. So, but when he gets it, he'll take it to his council and then get back to us.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, Carrie Butch, 500 Del Lake Drive, also here in my role as theasburyparkreporter.com. The, I want to talk to you about two different things. I'll piggyback off Alyssa. Is there going to be a pathway when you're on the boardwalk? I know that there's fences fencing off the building, but is there going to be a reasonable pathway? Because right now, if people have to walk up to the bridge, they're probably not going to. So, a lot of those businesses like Stella Marina and the ice cream shop, they're going to get hurt by this. I mean, they're going to get financially hurt by this. And they could potentially lay off people, and people aren't going to be making as much money. So, is there going to be like a concerted effort to create a pathway outside, maybe even both sides, that's safe and that's well-lit and that is easy to navigate and easy to see so that people come to Asbury Park from the end of Ocean Grove? That's my first question. And my second question is, I attended the Asbury Park Board of Ed budget meeting, budget hearing on Monday night. There's 100, there was an hour and 20 minutes worth of public participation, which we have on our YouTube site. One of the biggest things that they were talking about was that because of the pilot program and the way that that is negotiated, the city of As, the Board of Education has lost a lot of funding. So, now they're looking at, they're looking, or they are getting rid of positions such as student services positions, such as school safety positions, and also teaching staff, paraprofessional staff. So, they're losing a lot of critical, critical positions. So, they've basically want to, they want a relationship, or at least the community's crying out for a relationship between the city of Asbury Park and the Board of Ed to somehow maybe make it a little more fair so that some of the money that's coming here from the pilot project, instead of going to the school system, goes to the school system so that our kids aren't being, you know, short-changed by having a, you know, a tale of two cities, right? Because this is like a very super, uber, wealthy community that we're building million-dollar condos. In some instances, more than what we sold the waterfront for, one condo. And then, we have a situation where we have families that are, you know, struggling and really a school system that needs services. There was a really heartfelt commentary about young people that were living in their car. So, why would you get rid of the student services person who happens to be bilingual, dealing with Haitian families, dealing with families that are not uber-privileged? So, those are my questions, two.
Okay, as far as, is there an effort to find a new path? There is initial talks between the city manager, who's not here tonight because of the recent death in the family, and Madison Marquette, where Madison Marquette is looking into that. But it is, like you say, there's fences, there's dirt, there's everything. So, it's something they're looking into, and we'll get on top with them. But we don't even know how long it's going to be shut down. But so, they told us, they told us they're looking into an alternate path. Because you're right, I think, it was in today's paper, the guy who did the article, Davis, I think, said, instead of it being like a cut through, now like to walk all the way up to Main Street, it'd be like added 1.2 miles to get, you know, up and around. So, yes, Madison Marquette told us they are looking into that. As far as the school board, we've talked about that for hours, but we're not going to. Whatever their budget is, we have to fund 100%. We do every year by law. So, whatever their budget is, but they decide their budget is. Are we open to meetings? Absolutely. I was disappointed when their business BA said, oh, we met with the city two months ago, which is not true. Nobody from the Board of Education has met with the city in over a year, and have been promised they were going to meet with us, but supposedly, one or two people are holding up. And I say supposedly, that's what board members are telling me. So, we're open to meeting, we're open to looking for ideas and suggestions, you know, in the beachfront. Because, and Carrie, I agree with you about the 2002 agreement, we all agree, nobody disagrees. But, you know, by law, we have to give them pilots. So, and now the pilots we're giving out elsewhere, you know, is because of 20% affordable, which is needed to hopefully get more children. Because the only thing we truly know that the school funding law is truly based on, because it's the biggest secret in the world, is enrollment. So, we get more low-income housing and middle-income housing and everything to get more students in. The enrollment goes up, they get more state money. I'm going to give you 10 seconds for a follow-up.
I'm just going to say thank you for your response, and I'm looking forward to hearing more about your meetings with the Board of Education. Thank you.
We're waiting, because I've been told, John, we're going to meet with you, John, we're going to meet with you. So, I mean, I'm waiting for them to say when they're going to meet.
Okay.
And yep, I'm looking forward to it because we met last year. And I thought it was a very good meeting where we want to work together. And, but we've been promised meetings this year, they just haven't happened.
I think it does a disservice to suggest that the school district, it's all money anyway, whatever. As somebody who's a kid in the district, the school's complicated for a lot of reasons. It's not just money. That's my two cents.
Oh, good statement, especially with someone with a child in the school district. Anybody else like to be heard? Seeing nobody, make a motion to close.
Move to close?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Public justiciation portion is now closed. We're now on to the minutes. I have the executive meeting minutes and regular meeting minutes of April 26, 2023. Do I have a motion?
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn has left the room. Mayor Moore.
Yes.
We're now on to consent agenda resolutions. All matters listed on consent agenda are presented collectively to City Council and will be considered for approval with one vote. These matters are considered to be routine in nature, and there will be no individual discussion of these items. If discussion is desired by one or more council members as to any particular item, then said item shall be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. On consent agenda tonight, we have Resolutions 2023-225 through 2023-226. Do I have a motion?
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn has left the room. Mayor Moore. We're now on to individual resolutions. I have Resolution 2023-227, a resolution approving payment of bills.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton. Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore. Resolution 2023-211, a resolution authorizing the purchase of office furniture for various departments within the city.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-228, a resolution authorizing purchase of wristbands for the beach department.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-229, a resolution authorizing the purchase of roll-off containers for DPW.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson.
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman.
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton.
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn.
Yes.
Mayor Moore.
Yes.
Resolution 2023-230, a resolution authorizing the annual renewal of gunfire technology with ShotSpotter.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-231, a resolution authorizing a professional services contract to T and M Associates for construction management services for the new fire department headquarters.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-232, resolution awarding of a contract to Millennium Communications Group for security cameras at the new senior center offices.
Move it. Second. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-233, a resolution authorizing the execution of a shared service agreement between the county of Monmouth, the township of Neptune, and the city of Asbury Park.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-234, resolution authorizing ingenuity infrastructure to assist the city of Asbury Park in completing a community energy plan.
Move it. Second.
Just a question, and I'm gonna vote yes, but there was like two different numbers. So I don't know what, the front says 20,000, the back says like 20,050. So I don't know which one's right. So I don't care. No, I mean, but just, somebody can figure it out.
Okay. Can I take a roll call vote?
Yeah.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-235, a resolution of the mayor and council of the city of Asbury Park acting as the waterfront redevelopment entity amending resolution number 2022-226 adopted by the city council of the city of Asbury Park on May 11, 2022, regarding the operation of the food truck court in the Green Acres parcel in block 4502, lot 1.25, and referring the matter to the planning board for appropriate amended approvals.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Abstained.
Resolution 2023-236, a resolution endorsing the enactment of proposed legislation, A 938-S386, to create the New Jersey Reparations Task Force.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're now on to ordinances for introduction. Ordinance 2023-15 has been removed from tonight's agenda. We're now on to ordinance 2023-19, which is a bond ordinance providing for various park improvements by and in the city of Asbury Park and the county of Monmouth, state of New Jersey, appropriating 600,000 therefore, and authorizing the issuance of $571,428 beyond notes, bonds or notes of the city to finance part of the cost thereof with a public hearing date of May 24, 2023.
Move it. Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
Ordinance 2023-20, ordinance of the city of Asbury Park amending section 10 entitled Special Duty Assignments of Article 5, Departments and Divisions of Chapter 2, Administration of the Code of the City of Asbury Park, with a public hearing date of May 24, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Councilmember Bez Anderson?
Yes.
Councilmember Chapman?
Yes.
Councilmember Clayton?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Quinn?
Yes.
Mayor Moore?
Yes.
We're now on to the 2023 municipal budget introduction. It's resolution 2023-237, introduction of the 2023 municipal budget with a public hearing date of June 14, 2023.
Move it.